Well, how, uh, county council meeting. Appreciate your presentation in the process. That said, because we have so many people here, we will do our best to be expedient with the agenda. And in the spirit of that, I would now like to move on to the invocation and pledge, followed by the disability pledge. Ms. Mack, if you would lead us in the invocation, I would invite whoever is interested to stand and pray in your faith as we pray in ours.
Mr. Mayor, before we do the, um, prayer and the pledge, can the Girl Scouts come and lead the pledge for us?
Sounds great to me. Good idea.
Let us pray. Most holy and everlasting Father, thou art God and God alone. Father, we come to you today, first of all, to tell you we love you and we thank you. And we thank you for all your loving kindness and care. Lord, we ask you to continue to bless this city of Hartsville that we all love so much. And in your word it says, except the law build the city, those that build, build and bang. So, Lord, we are trying to build our city, control our city. But in order to do that, Lord, we need to keep every doing what's right and doing what's just and fair for every citizen, every servant, and every citizen. So, Lord, we please, we pray now and ask for your holy presence in this room. Do this, do that, and all that we should do. Lord, we ask for your continued devotion over our residents, over our council, over our staff.
Over our first responders. Your name, the praise.
We know the rest of us, the name of your worship, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Girl Scouts, would mind coming up and lead us in the pledge?
Come on, girl.
Yup. She does not know it so well. Uh-oh.
Teresa, what's her? Come on, Mr. Teresa. Come on, make it right. You want numbers, everyone? Charlie's here.
Absolutely. Want to pick us off?
Hold my, hold my.
The United States of America and the Republic of America is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't go too far. We've got your proclamation coming up. Just a second. Okay, disability pledge. Oh, disability pledge, yes. All right. If you would join us in the disability pledge that we have on our monitors here. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others' rights, and finding solutions for the better of our city. Thank you all very much. Moving right along to the approval of minutes, I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of and approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty four regular city council meeting and the February twenty first, twenty twenty four special council meeting.
It is so moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a couple of seconds. Is there any discussion, any changes or edits? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving, waiving the reading and approving the minutes of the February thirteenth and February twenty first meetings, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Minutes are approved. And now to proclamation. Bring my little microphone with me. Uh, let's see what, figure out here. With this, we have the Girl Scouts here. I'm gonna do the Women's History Month first, since the Girl Scouts are those that are currently writing Women's History. In Hartsville. Is anyone here to accept this would like to come forward? I should, there then. All right.
It's a good picture.
Control you meet.
Get up there. Yeah, I'm good. Good to see you. Yeah, you, you got that right. Yeah, come on, come on. Come on in. Okay. Y'all, y'all got us in frame?
Yeah, yeah. Put it up front.
Aww.
All right, I, I'm gonna go ahead and get started real quick. Whereas the purpose of Women's History Month is to celebrate the vital contributions women have made to the United States and to recognize the achievements women have made over the course of American history in a variety of fields. And whereas the vision and achievements of women from every walk of life have made possible the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women in our community play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life. And whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing privilege and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, industrial labor movement, civil rights movement, and other movements which create a fair and justice all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville in the State of South Carolina, do proudly for as Women's History Month. In Hartsville, in recognition of the long history of women helping to realize our nation's founding promise and highest aspirations, and urge all citizens to join me in continuing to work to build a world worthy of the dreams and goals of all women and girls. Thank you all so much for being here. It was. Ms. Mack?
Ladies, I want you to take note of Ms. Adelina Graham. She is our senior, most senior citizen woman in this city. And Ms. Graham set, served on council for twenty-four years. And I am the only woman on council. So I want you all to take note that women participate in everything. We help make this world better and continue to do the jobs that we all do and do them lead with love and light.
I want to see you. I want to see you. One shot. There's a lot. Where'd our Girl Scouts run off to? Yeah, I'll, I'll present and then we can come to photo opportunity afterwards. How about that? Whereas March twelfth, twenty twenty four, the hundred and twelfth anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Julia nineteen twelve in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas Girl Scouts unleashes the G I R L, go getter, innovator, risk taker leader in every girl preparing for her lifetime of leadership. And whereas, out its distinguished, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with courage, confidence, and character to make the world a better place. And whereas Girl Scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the opportunities in math, science, sports, technology, and many fields of interest that can expand their horizons. And whereas nearly two million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating this American tradition and welcome girls from every background to join. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville in the State of South Carolina, do proudly hereby proclaim the week of March tenth through sixteenth, twenty twenty four, as Girl Scout Week. In Hartsville, and applaud the commitment Girl Scouting has made to support the leadership and development of America's girls and urge all citizens to join me in celebrating Girl Scout Week, twenty twenty four. As a little token of appreciation, I have a City of Hartsville badge. It should be in the shape of a heart, of course. Don't forget you. Thank you all so much. Do we have, uh, we need to? All right, I got, yeah, I'll give those two.
Um, welcome, Miss.
Thank you, absolutely. One more proclamation, this is for Disabilities Awareness Month. I'll go ahead and read it and then we can gather up front for a photo opportunity. Whereas more than five hundred thousand South Carolina residents and families are impacted by severe lifelong disabilities, including autism, head injuries, spinal cord injuries, electoral intellectual disabilities and related disabilities without regard to race, culture, geography, age, sex, or economic class. And whereas people with lifelong disabilities are productive citizens, neighbors, and family members deserving the respect and opportunities for economic self-sufficiency, independence, and personal growth. And whereas we owe a special debt of gratitude to the caregivers who selfishly provide physical, emotional, and spiritual support to our residents with disabilities and special needs. And whereas the twenty twenty four Observance of Disabilities Awareness Month celebrates the successful partnership between people with and without disabilities, as well as the increasing involvement of people with disabilities in education, employment, and community activities. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville in the State of South Carolina, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of March twenty twenty four as Disabilities Awareness Month in Hartsville and encourage our citizens to work together to promote increased opportunities for people with disabilities, to recognize the many contributions made by people with disabilities in our community, and to honor the dedication of the caregivers who bring support and hope to their fellow citizens. It's my honor to bring this to you today. Yes, if you wouldn't mind telling, telling everybody what HSC you refer.
Darlington County Disability and Special Needs Board.
Yeah, uh, Darlington County Disability and Special Needs Board.
Thank you again. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies.
All right. Moving on to item B, we have T A here tonight for date, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. Yes, and, um, if you would. Found that, um, they work a lot better if you can, uh, get close to them, yeah.
This work. First off, I want to thank y'all for having me, the council, and also I want to commend Hartsville. Obviously, y'all have great rapport among the community to have a packed, um, packed chamber tonight. I, I, with the P D R T A, I cover six counties and I have about twenty-eight municipalities that I go to for council meetings. And this is honestly the first time I've ever seen people standing in a foyer for a city council meeting. So that's pretty amazing. It's something to hold your heads up high on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We go to the next slide?
Thank you. So just to start off with a little bit of the service update for Hartsville. P D R T A currently runs fixed route service as well as demand and response, which we started in November twenty twenty-three. The heart service is the bus service that you see going around town on an hourly basis. The fiscal year to date, that has been twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty-six. That is a huge increase. I think last year it was in the ten thousand numbers. So we're, we're on track to do tremendous growth compared to what we have done last year. And just this month alone, as you see, we're doing sixteen hundred trips. Compared to last year, that amount was, I have it here, only a thousand. So it's gone up six hundred trips just from a year per, on a monthly basis there. When we're talking about demand and response, this is a new service here in Hartsville, South Carolina that serves the two nine five five O zip code. That is a service that allows people to call us twenty-four hours in advance. We'll go to their door, pick them up, and take them to go shopping, medical appointments, hairdressers, job, uh, interviews, wherever they need to go. We offer that service completely free as well, um, as to fixed route service, thanks to your contributions and some of the local partners in the area. And right now, we're seeing that service, as you can see by the numbers, it's doing about two hundred and fifty to three hundred trips on a monthly basis. And, but it just started in November, so we're only expecting that to continue to rise. I just want to talk a little bit briefly about the changes P T, P D R T A has made over the past couple of years and kind of the new vision we're looking at now and heading as a public transit organization, but also public transportation statewide. My boss, Don, who could not be here tonight because he's sick, uh, he's also the president of the Transportation Association of South Carolina. So we get to engage with a lot of the other R T As around the state, as well as some of the economic development, um, associations, as well as healthcare associations all across the, the state. So one of the things we're seeing right now across the state is workforce transportation is the big push. A lot of people can't afford multiple cars to go to and from work, a lot of single car households, as well as a lot of households with no cars at all. The average car price right now for a brand new car is fifty-one thousand dollars. And the average price of a used car right now is thirty-three thousand dollars. So for a lot of people, if you're in that, uh, poverty level to two hundred and fifty percent times the poverty level, you can't really afford that on a feasible, in, on a, on a feasible basis there. So that's where we come in. We help you with that. But we don't discriminate. We, we transport the rich, the poor, the old, the young, the sick, the strong. Anyone can ride public transit and in Darlington County is completely free. So right now, we're seeing about forty-five percent of our ridership is workforce transportation related, people going to and from work. What does that mean for trans, for the industry? For industry, we partner with Harbor Freight and Dillon. We partner with Pepsi Ruiz Foods in Florence. And we're trying to work on some other industries around our different county areas, because transportation is the number one barrier to turnover rates for industry. The average price to turn over one employee is around five thousand dollars. That's the, the training programs to hire them. If you fire them, the training programs to hire somebody else to fill their place. So when you can cut down on the turnover rates, you effectively open up this new access of funds for a business to be able to lift the wages. With Harbor Freight, their turnover rate has gone down from two hundred and fifty percent in twenty twenty down to sixty-seven percent as of now. That's not solely because of P D R T A's service.
Mostly, though.
I will tie it. It's partly because of us. We offer workforce transportation routes to and from work, directly from the workers' homes. That's something we're inviting all of our industry to the table to talk about. But what it ends up effectively doing is when you're not having to turn over the same twenty, thirty percent of workers, you, for transportation-related reasons, you effectively save that money that you would have spent in turnover and they lifted their wages. And when they lifted their wages, they saw a huge retention rate. So people are actually wanting to stay at work there. And that's a lot, a huge common theme around the P D and South Carolina as far as the turnover rates. Another approach that we're working on is educational opportunity. Amazingly, I'm proud to say that Hartsville, South Carolina has kind of been our pilot program for that, as well as Darlington County. One of the things we're in process of doing right now is putting in twelve new bus shelters in Hartsville, South Carolina. These bus shelters are being funded by the Byerly Foundation and are in cahertz with Darlington County School District, as well as the Care First Foundation. These bus shelters will be planned to coincide with our passenger rates, as well as the school district bus stop rates. So students riding the bus stop or needing to, riding the bus that are, uh, gathering in large groups at, at certain spots will be able to put the bus shelter there where it benefits those students, as well as it benefits our riders. So we're trying to handle this from a dual approach, serving the most of the community, getting the best bang for the buck there. These bus stops will be Wi-Fi, um, connected. They will have solar charging. They will have U S B C, U S B. With the potential to add more amenities, some can be ordered where they have air conditioning in the, in the summer. Some can be ordered where they have heating in the winters. It just depends, but those would be the basic necessities that these bus stops will have, is the Wi-Fi capability, U S B C charging. That way, students can utilize that study time in the morning while they're waiting on the bus. The second part of the, what we've got going on here in Darlington County and Hartsville is a partnership with the school district's Key to Career Program. That is an internship program where the students can choose an internship at a vast array of businesses and industries in the county. And we'll pick them up from the school, take them to their internship that they get paid for. They get to learn there, the on-hand training, how the job works, and we get to pick them up from that internship and take them back to school to go home. This has been very effective. Right now, we have fifty-six seniors in that program from all four high schools in the county. And that's it? Four? Yes, four high schools in the county. But that, we're seeing a sixty-five percent retention rate with that. So that means when these students are graduating high school, they're getting a job offer to the internship that they had just worked at, and they're choosing to take that job offer. That's huge in filling that gap for workforce and industry needs. We see in partners with Sunoco, Carolina Bank, um, the Fire Department. So it's a way to fill the gap of those, that workforce need. A lot of the workforce demand now is needing that secondary education or some kind of pre-employment education. So if those children can effectively get that while they're still in high school, before they even graduate, they're more likely to be more successful when they do graduate and getting a job offer or getting something more along the lines of what they're looking for employment-wise. So that's been huge for us. And we're looking to pilot that across all six counties once we move forward a little bit more and figure out the Darlington one. Once, this one's just started last year, so we're hopefully, next year, we'll be putting them around in other counties. So y'all have been the pilot for that, and that's amazing. One of the things, oh, I did. Another thing that we're currently doing, um, is in Florence, unrelated, but this is something we're looking in potential to talk about, um, expanding, is we offer ESL field trip in, with the Florence Adult Ed Schools. So their ESL program is English second language, which allows them to be able to learn how to ride public transit, but also learn the day-to-day necessities that you may need to know, like going to the bank, opening a bank account. How do you go deposit a check? How do you open a credit card, a banking, a savings account, all of those different things? But then also, how do you use the post office? How do you go shopping? Where do you pay your taxes? Different things like that to help them, um, accustom to the new environment. So that's something we're also looking at expanding a point to, as far as educational opportunities. P D R T A realizes that there's a direct correlation between education and workforce needs. You gotta be able to build them up on an educational level to prepare them to fulfill the workforce needs of industries. So that's one of the ways we're able to do that.
The next one?
So here is our plan for the future. This is our plan specifically for all six counties. We're working on some of this currently in each of the counties. And we're looking on planning this out as far as what this will look like on a timeline basis. But some of the options we're looking at now is more, more workforce-related routes, as well as more connectivity amongst our counties. We just recently introduced service back into Chesterfield County. So effectively, we cover all the way to Pageland, all the way to Williamsburg County and Cades. And we even have bus routes that go from Florence all the way to Myrtle Beach and Marion and Mullins to Myrtle Beach. So we're trying to connect the P D and be able to allow for commutable, um, options besides Uber, Lyft, or taxi service. That could be more unreliable or less dependent in, in that sense. But one of the things that I am here for is to be included again in y'all's budget planning session. And one of the things I would like to ask for is a little increase. Currently, the City of Hartsville has given us fifteen thousand per year, which is great and we're very thankful for, but we would like to see that increase go to nineteen thousand. I know that's a, a lot to ask for, but, um, that is something we would like to see. And we're, that, the nineteen puts us at the mark of what the county is giving, and we're currently going to be asking the county for increases as well. So that's just one of the things we're looking at. Y'all have any questions for me? I know that was a lot.
Well, first I'll say thanks. It's, um, super encouraging to see some of the numbers, uh, and programs you've got going to. It demonstrates why we partnered with P D R T A. Partnership was an investment in the people of Hartsville, right? It's really encouraging to see some of the results you're getting. And, uh, you know, absolutely, if you don't ask, you know, you know, you'll never get it. So we appreciate you coming. We'll take that in consideration as we work through the budget to, uh, basically the rest of the summer. So, um, if anybody else, obviously, you know, floor is yours. If anybody else has any comment.
I'd like to thank you for having P D R T A take us around Hartsville.
Yeah, absolutely.
Y'all did a wonderful job getting us around the city, so I appreciate the time y'all spent.
Thank you.
Yeah, it worked out very well. Thank you. And I'm really excited to see the, the bus shelters, thanks to the Byerly Foundation for health and support. That, that was something I've, I've long wanted to see. Uh, there's one thing to have a bus stop, but to ask somebody to wait in inclement weather, you know, I think that's gonna be, that, that's a real game changer.
And we just finished the, we just finished the procurement phase of that and we're now in the scoping part of it.
Cool.
So Byerly is doing the actual calculations of where they'll finalize going.
Yeah.
And then we'll take that and then get ready to place.
Fantastic. Good to see you moving forward. Thank you again.
And I wanted, I wanted to thank
Oh, yes.
P D R T A and also the City of Hartsville, because at one time we lost P D R T A. And now that we've regained the services of P D R T A back, uh, all citizens ride free. It's unthinkable of what the cost is to have to pay a taxi to and from doctor's appointment. I had a person to call me one o'clock in the morning because they didn't have anyone else to call to bring them home from the emergency room. So I appreciate all you do and we will consider your, um, increase very, very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. In the interest of time, we'll move right into public comment. It looks like we've got one. Uh, Ms. Serrano, if you would, uh, we'd love for you to come forward. Um, and if you would, again, like, like gentlemen did, if you would sit where the microphone is close to your mouth, so we can all hear. And, uh, please state your name and address for the record, of course, and leave your comments to two minutes or less.
I'm Marv Serrano.
I'm Marv Serrano. I'm here representing Mildred Burno, two-two-two Wilkes Circle, Hartsville. I'm her POA, so I always do things for her. Today, my issue is, again, the street repairs for that, for two-two-two Wilkes Circle. I bought some pictures here to give to Mr. Moore, so they can look over and see what the street actually looks like when it's raining and how the water still pools up. The South Carolina Department of Dot, or whatever y'all call them, they were supposed to have come and did some repairs. I have pictures of that to show him, too, that what repairs they did made the street worse. The water is still, the water is still, you know, standing, the water is not draining. And I typed a letter to leave with him, so I won't forget whatever, you know, all my notes that I wanted to talk about. I say, on a recent visit to Hartsville, the above situations were observed. And the above situation I'm speaking of is the standing water, poorly paved street, the lack of proper maintenance, the recent poor repairs by the South Carolina Department of Transportation, and also have created what we consider a private property infringement situation. Not only did they mess up the repair work that they did, they bulldozed onto her private property without permission and without any type of compensation. And as my letter will indicate, a private citizen is not responsible for the water drain from the city. So, so we are checking in ourselves for whatever kind of legal issues this presents. And we have been calling the South Carolina Department, leaving messages, and Mr. Scarborough hasn't responded to us. And I know in the past, Mr. Moore did respond to me, so therefore, I addressed the letter to him, so I will pass it to him. Because even though, as I say in the letter, you say that they are the ones responsible for the repair, my thing is that the city belongs, the street belongs to the city. So as far as I'm concerned, the ultimate responsibility to keep the streets in good repair still rests with the city. And this is a neglected neighborhood that deserves better. The street hasn't been paved since these homes were built some fifty-plus years ago, even though you, they have to pay taxes. So my thing is, I'm hoping that someone will come out while we're here, look at it, and look at the situation firsthand, and see what I'm talking about, how bad the street looks. And I'm hoping that somebody can do some proper repair for it. So I will leave my letter to you and the pictures, and then you can kind of get back with me.
Yes, ma'am.
With that.
And, see, I'm briefed this time. I didn't have a lot to, you know, to bring up this time, but I'm still concerned about that street, because it's bad for driving, you know, and moving about, amelation or anything for that street. So I wanted to make sure, and then now, if the weather's breaking, what, standing water is an environmental hazard, mosquitoes and all that kind of stuff, water standing.
Awesome. Well, if you would, please, you know, absolutely, leave what you've got with Manager Moore. Thank you again for, for coming to speak to us about your concerns. We'll be happy to, to continue to advocate for you on your behalf.
I was supposed to address it to the public works people, but I didn't. All right. I appreciate it.
And once again, thank you for hearing as well.
Thank you, Ms. Serrano. That is in my district, and I will follow as well. Yes.
Understood. Thank you again.
What I said was, that is in my district, so I will be helping follow up with that. Thank you.
Well, that concludes the presentations, and with that, I'll hand it over to you, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So we have a couple of things for you tonight. First of all, I do have a couple, we have several guests in the audience tonight. Of course, we have our pickleballer who's here to thank you guys for coming. Also, leadership Hartsville, I think we have a few leadership Hartsville people. Thank you guys for coming, and of course, the Girl Scouts and everyone, all our other friends of the city and employees who have to be here. But I do want to take a moment tonight. I want to invite Chiefs Byron Snellgrove up. Something really, I think, amazing happened this past, over really Christmas, but we had to delay this for a little bit, because they were busy. But would you go ahead and talk to him about something that happened that's truly wonderful?
I'd be glad to. Hopefully, everybody can hear me out. The pollen death that's coming in is sort of taken by my voice, probably like it is everybody else. Early this year, very early this year, we had a fifteen-year-old walk off from the hospital. And the concern was, because the rumor was out there, that she may be in danger, that maybe some sexual trafficking, things like that going on. And I, I will tell you, there's nothing that gets our officers more ready to go and, and on edge than something that occurs with one of our children here in the city. So I want to call the officers that were involved in this up and tell you a little bit about what happened with it. Kelly Woodham, Janice Woodham, Shannon Hoffman, had to go to a call, she's actually on duty, so she's not here right now. Chrissy Jeffords, Johnny Wyndham, and April Tom.
Oh, I suppose.
This is probably, this is about your mind as well. So very early this year, like I said, we had a fifteen-year-old walk off. She was picked up by a pickup truck, but we had absolutely no information on it, and had no clue who was driving it or anything else. Like I said, there was some concern that she might be in danger, so we started rallying the troops. And almost immediately, Kelly, Janice, and Shannon started checking social media. They started checking her social media and trying to find any type of lead that they may come up with to give us an idea of who could have picked her up and where she could have gone. Well, they came up with a lead, and we developed that lead with them on this truck. And we, we wound up finding the driver of the truck, and he told us that he had picked her up after meeting her on social media and had taken her to Travelers Rest, South Carolina. Now, if anybody knows where Travelers Rest is, it's about four hours away. It's a very long way. So our guys then immediately took over. Chrissy, Johnny, and April started working the case. And we followed her from, from here to Travelers Rest, to Newbury, to Lawrence, to Gray Court, and all of that area right in there. And after about forty-eight hours, we got her back where she was supposed to be. We got her back safe. And if you know anything about missing children or about how those cases go, it's a very small percentage of these kids that don't want to be found in our county. And in this case, our, our officers were very diligent in trying to find out what happened to this girl and make sure that she was safe and to get her back to safety. And, and I think the, the steps that they took and the measures that they went to were pretty amazing for anything that I've seen in South Carolina. And I just wanted to get them up here to really thank them for doing the job they do. This is a small section of our department. And I think our, our entire department really do have a heart for Hartsville. And they want to do everything that they can to make Hartsville a better place to live and a better place to be, and they do a very good job. These guys just deserve the recognition for doing the job they did that particular day. One of the things I'm going to give them before we get out of here is a certificate of recognition, as well as a ribbon, like a military ribbon, that they can wear on their uniforms, their dress uniforms. So April? Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your patience.
Thank you all so much. We salute you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Byron. I hope you do understand how much we appreciate you taking care of the people of Hartsville. No. Some of the, the, the friends of the young woman who, who you rescued. And I can't, I can't begin to tell you how appreciative they are of what you did. So thank you for, for serving our citizens, and, you know, all of you make us proud. We really, really do. So a big, big thanks to the Hartsville PD for the work that they do. Any other comment on that? All right, well, Mr. Manager, if you would remind us about our eighteen-day deadline?
Yes, if you would, please file your economic, state economic interests by March thirtieth. Again, that is due at noon. Statement of economic interest, please file those, or else they will find you. Not our police, but someone else. So, yeah, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
The consent agenda, we'll receive that as information. Thank you again to all of our department heads and all those that work on those reports to keep us informed. We really appreciate that. That brings us right into new business. I'll put my, my business shades on for this. Mr. Manager, for the first reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-eight, if you would publish the ordinance by title in presentation?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. First reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-eight is an ordinance to lease the property at one forty-nine West Carolina Avenue to Darlington County Humane Society.
Yeah, I can't see. So that's a renewal of the lease.
Yes, sir. This is the retail therapy that's downtown. Of course, it's a huge component to their operational, you know, costs and whatnot, but we rent it to them on an annual basis.
It's a popular shop, too. I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance forty-four sixty-eight.
Thank you. Got a motion. Second, any discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the first reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-eight, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Forty-four sixty-eight passes first reading. That brings us right on to vote. Resolution oh-three twenty-one oh-one, Mr. Manager.
Resolution zero-three twenty-four zero-one is adopting the twenty-twenty-three PD Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I know this is, as you can see, this is a PD-wide plan that we are participants in. I know Chief Burrow worked on this pretty extensively, and Chief Snellgrove, too, I feel sure, left, but any?
You cannot miss Snellgrove, baby.
We did. So basically, we have to adopt this so that we're up to date with what's going on, and this makes us eligible for FEMA funding if something were to happen, so we're all, same, we're, we're in lock and step with the rest of the county and the PD.
Coordinate, coordinate with our peers. All right, while entertaining a motion to approve resolution zero-three twenty-four zero-one.
It is so moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a couple seconds. Any discussion on this resolution? All right, we're hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution zero-three twenty-four zero-one, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, resolution. Thank you, Chiefs, on that. We're moving right along to resolution three twenty-four two, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. It's to authorize allocation and expenditure of the remaining American Rescue Plan Act funds.
All right. For the benefit of the public, if you would.
Yes, sir. So this, again, the American Rescue Plan Act funds were the stimulus monies that the city's received as a result of the COVID relief spending that went through. The city received about three-point-eight million dollars in total. Over the last, I guess it's twenty-twenty-one, we have expended about two point, maybe six or two million of that money, and we had remaining one million, three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars to spend, or something like that. And so we met in our Hartsville Strategic Plan, Harts Vision Twenty-Five, after we rode on our bus, PDRTA. And we discussed several projects that needs to be allocated, that money has to be obligated by the end of the year, by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, that money has to be obligated, not spent, but allocated for a project. And we identified several projects across the entire city that deserve some attention, notably to our recreation facilities, namely our parks, also to several of our economic development interests, such as Fourth and Railroad, the Sixth Street Corridor, working on improvements there, along with those bus stops, because we want to have those there. And then also some various things for lighting of our downtown area, some support for Humane Society, and also some more monies towards our cameras, the police cameras, which is going to incorporate some AI technology to help us find, just like we had here, missing children and missing people faster and helping with crime. So that money, again, was obligated about one, one-point-two-eight of that million. We still have our remaining seventy-six thousand dollars that needs to be allocated. But this resolution allows us to start moving forward on spending that money and working on those plans.
Awesome. Thank you. So as you could probably tell, the, the funds are being allocated to a number of different projects that touch just about all of Hartsville in, in some ways. So it's really, I'm excited to see some of this stuff move forward. I would entertain, well, thank you, first of all, a, okay, let's do the, the motion first. I would entertain a motion to approve resolution zero-three twenty-four zero-two.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions?
I do have a question. Mr. Manager, could you please refresh my memory on, let's say, for example, we have something like pickleball courts in Lawton Park that exceeds the hundred-and-fifty K or doesn't meet the hundred-and-fifty K that we've, or may allocate to it?
Sure.
If there's money remaining from that, where, where do we go with that money? Is it up to our discretion where we want that money to go from there still, or because of the obligations it sets down there?
So obligating until it's spent, obligating is part of the requirement for the state, is one of the requirements for the, under the law that came out. We are going to be spending up to that amount under that refresh, again, it's a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for pickleball at Lawton, a hundred-and-fifty for the two other parks, and another a hundred-and-fifty for another park. And so that money, should it go up to the hundred-and-fifty, then that money will be expended for that purpose. And if anything goes over that, we certainly will bring back to council any type of overages, and that will be discussed where that funding is going to come from. Generally, it's going to come from city funds, and in this, we have additional reserves, it's the seventy-six I mentioned. If it goes underneath it, it can still be re-obligated to another purpose, should you need it. It just needs to be obligated on paper, so that's not sitting there, or just kind of like, we're stalling to spend the money. So the state needs us to obligate it by the end of this year, but certainly, if something comes up, you have every option to re-obligate it if you need to. It's, it's kind of setting in stone, it's just giving us the marching orders of what we can do going forward.
But that, that obligation also covers the overall park improvement of all the parks that we visited as well. So therefore, there may be other projects within that same project that that money can run over, too. Not just the one specific ordeal, let's be clear on that.
Yes, sir. It's four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for recreation improvements, what we have. But our, our attempt will be, of course, this is in the budget parameters, we are dealing with round numbers, of course, and we did this before we did any procurement, so we still have to go out for bid for some items on it. But for the most part, this resolution approval of it allows me and my staff to start moving forward on several of the projects every day, because this is quite a hefty list of projects. We're very, we're excited to get these started, but we do have two years to spend. In conjunction with this, the remaining, some of the other monies we spent was, again, the South Carolina Infrastructure Improvement Plan, which was a nine-million-dollar grant that we received for infrastructure improvements to our water tower, to our lift stations, to our wastewater treatment plant. That also has to be spent with the next year, so the next two years will be very busy. And so we are excited to get started. That's why we wanted to do this in March and be ready to go.
Thank you.
Good question, good clarification. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I also want to let members that are present here tonight to let them know that the historic Butler District was looked at and is being funded with some of these funds. Pride Park and some other places, the Sixth Street Corridor. So don't feel neglected. We're finally getting some of the attention that we need.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Four hundred thousand dollars was allocated to Sixth Street Corridor.
And just for clarification on that money allocated, is that for, just for refreshment?
Sure.
Is that going to be on the plans that we try to solicit for, outside vendors, as to what they think? Kind of like a third opinion outside of ourselves?
Sure. So some of the things we talked about in spending the money, so for instance, Fourth and Railroad, was a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars allocated in that portion. And that, the desire is there is to get updated information, for instance, on our housing situation, what housing, what types we need, how much we need. So we definitely need to pay it, some professionals come in and let us know, so we can make the best data-driven decisions as we move forward. It also will involve some public involvement, so we'll have ability for people to have input into what's going on, not just on Fourth and Railroad, not just on Sixth Street, but really kind of a citywide approach. But the real thing is what we're. But the real thing is what we're doing is we're setting ourselves up to be able to present this information to people who are coming to look at Hartsville, and the so they can make the best decision to invest their money here. Uh Hartsville needs to grow in certain ways, but it needs to grow strategically and strongly. Um I think we have a good grasp on it, but it's always important to make sure that we are at the reins of this thing going on. So that's exactly what we're doing here. We're making sure that we have a the best information going forward. Uh we will certainly be looking at uh studies and information that can help us make those decisions, help you make those decisions, and not try to uh just have another plan that sits on a shelf. That's definitely not on our agenda. We're ready to go.
Very good. And for everybody here tonight, when we have those info sessions, we might obligate the money which y'all are the stakeholders. So whenever those events come around, please come and give us your opinions. We would love to hear them.
Okay. All right. Um any any other comment on this resolution, approving it? Go ahead and take a vote. All right. All those in favor of uh Approving resolution zero-three twenty-four zero-two, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution has passed. Moving right on, resolution zero-three twenty-four zero-three. Mr. Manager, if you would, publish it?
Yes, sir. This is approval to apply for the South Carolina Forestry Commission Grant.
Awesome.
And what this is, it's uh in spirit of what just uh just passed. We are looking at partnering or doing a grant with the S C Forestry Commission to take a look at our downtown trees and lighting situation. Um so part of the uh Rescue Plan Act monies we're looking at is to really look, I have a fun name for it, but I'm going to hold it back, but uh we want to light up our downtown. Um and the goal here is to make sure that the trees that are been a lovely addition since nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six-ish timeframe uh are not a hindrance, but an asset to the city, and that's going to take some careful um look at what we're doing to make sure they're not affecting our resources. Uh so this is part of our operation to um light up the downtown, and this is a hundred-thousand-dollar grant application. It's a twenty percent match, so we would obligate from the hundred thousand dollars you guys just um allowed me to or obligated, twenty of that will go towards this plan to then make it into a hundred thousand dollars. So uh we're very excited about this. Our staff found this as we were getting through the plan, and uh we're very excited to go after it.
Awesome. Well, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution zero-three twenty-four zero-three.
It is so moved.
Any questions on this? All right. Those take a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution zero-three twenty-four zero three, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
The last one for new business, resolution zero-three twenty-four zero-four. Mr. Manager, if you publish the resolution?
Yes, sir. This is approval to apply for a South Carolina Department of Public Safety S C D P S grant.
Awesome. And for everyone's benefit, if you would explain.
Be happy to. Uh so we are looking at, so just like a long story short, we have some radios that need to be upgraded, and it is not cheap. So we are looking, uh we are working currently with the state for some earmarked monies, but in the meantime, we're going to work in parallel to also apply for the S C D P S grant. Um our state representative who's working with us is fully aware of that and willing to help us with that. But the idea is that we need to spend um close to a hundred thousand dollars to just make our rate sure our radios are in compliance. Um it is a very costly endeavor. Um all cities are dealing with this right now because it's they're going to sunset the ability for radios to function if they do not have these updates or not new. So across the state, uh many municipalities, including some very small ones, are going to be in very deep trouble if they cannot fund these uh radio increase or radio improvements. Uh fire is going through the same thing. Um and so police, and this is a, is the eight-hundred radio um we're moving to, correct you? Uh without that, they will not be able to communicate. And so this is extremely important. Uh this is a hundred-thousand-dollar, again, grant. Uh it's a ten percent match for us, so we would have to obligate ten thousand dollars. Um and so we are looking to find any way we can to uh better use our taxpayer dollars and have to spend it out of the fund, but this is important to do.
All right. Let's get a let's get a motion first. Um in in that spirit, I would entertain a motion to approve resolutions zero-three twenty-four zero-four.
It's so moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second now. Uh Councilman Dela?
Sure. Uh it is Quite a number we have in turn. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Snowgrove. Number, if you could help me with that.
Uh all those uh twenty-four of those
There we go.
Have got to either be replaced or upgraded. Uh so
What's the cost of a new radio? You built the last cost, in your opinion. The ones that are built to last, what do they cost on the high end?
Okay. It's thirty-five hundred to five grand.
Five thousand dollars for a new radio, and then it's going to cost three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars to flash them per radio.
Software update.
The software update, which will, you know, so and so as you can see, we have quite a fifty fire that we're talking about. Um we just had a budget meeting. It was twenty-one thousand dollars to flash the ones that we had. Uh so this is, this is real dollars that um that are being applied. So we have been diligently looking after every grant opportunity we can to, again, as you can see, if we can turn twenty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars, we're absolutely going to do that. Uh this is, again, working in parallel. We still have a state request for um appropriations as well, so we're trying to tackle this from many angles.
Any other question? All right. We'll um hearing none. All those in favor of approving Resolutions zero-three twenty-four zero-four, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, the ayes have it. Resolution zero-three twenty-four zero-four has been approved, and that brings us to executive session. I would entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Thirty-four seventy-eight one for discussion of the city manager's performance evaluation.
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor of entering executive session, please. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Ladies and gentlemen, we now stand in executive session. Thank you again for being here. We really appreciate your attendance.